I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, 6:00 PM School Board Regular Meeting. Please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the heavens above, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, so at this time, we will recess to our public hearing. Before we begin the public hearing, I need a motion to adopt the agenda on the public hearing.
Point of information, we need to do roll call first, then we can go that way.
I apologize. I did make that mistake. Roll call, please.
Colleen Conklin, present.
Cheryl Massaro here.
Kristi Chong.
Will Furry, present.
LaShaka Moore.
Now.
So we will now move on to 2.01. At this time, we will recess the public hearing. Before we begin the public hearing, I will need a motion to adopt the agenda on the public hearing approval.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Conklin and a second from Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, so Ms. Wormack, you're going to give us an overview of the disclosure.
Yes, sir. Good evening Chairman Furry, Board members, and Superintendent Moore. I'm here this evening to talk about the opportunity to refund a portion of our Series 2014A COPS debt. As presented to you at the Board Workshop two weeks ago, the current outstanding balance of this debt is 24.2 million. This debt issuance matures in 2030, '31 fiscal year. In several of the later years of this debt issuance, the interest rate is 5% versus 3% for the other years. So what we are recommending per our bond counsel and our financial advisors is to refund the debt service payments at 5% to a lower interest rate, to the lowest that we can get it. The total amount that is going to be refunded per their recommendation is $14,535,000. Just to note, the refunding will not extend the maturity of the loan. It will still mature in 2030, '31, and it will not create a balloon balance at the end, which I believe, Mr. Furry, you had asked just, you know, for purposes of making sure that we're not getting into a situation that we're not aware of. So the end result would be a minimum 3% savings or $441,000 to get this refunding done. For clarification, the word refunding is the governmental term for refinancing. In addition to this item, 2.01, it also includes the contract for our disclosure council that is pertinent to getting through the debt refunding process. At this time, I will take any questions on this 2.01 item before we move on to the resolutions. And just to know, Chairman Furry, we will need an action item for the agreement that is on 2.01.
Okay. So I will need a motion to approve the retainer agreement, which is part of the overall debt refunding process.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, I have approval by Ms. Chong and a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, so now we'll move on to a public hearing discussion. 3.01, Board Member Comments. Are there any board member comments in regards to this?
No, just for the benefit of the public, I think it's important to note that we did workshop this item and discuss it in great length. So just again, for the benefit of the public, so that they know that it was discussed.
Do we have any public comments on this agenda item? Seeing no one come forward, we will close public comment. 3.03, Superintendent Moore, do you have any comments to this agenda item?
I do not.
Okay. So... We will now move to our public hearing action, item 4.01 with Ms. Wormack.
4.01, we're going to recess before we do the first resolution. Okay, sorry about that. I'm going to have our bond counsel, Mr. Patel, come up and talk about the first resolution. There are two resolutions tonight for approval. One to be approved by the School Board and one to be approved by the Leasing Corporation, which is made up of the School Board and the Superintendent. So I'm going to hand this one over to him at this point.
And for clarification and point of order, we're at 4.01.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Superintendent Moore. Ritesh Patel with Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson, your bond counsel. What you have before you is our Certificate Resolution 2324-05, which authorizes the refunding of the Series, all or a portion of the Series in 2014A COPS, as Ms. Wormack just described to you. In order to achieve debt service savings, the resolution authorizes the Chair and the Superintendent to enter into the financing documents and a purchase contract with the underwriter for this transaction, which is Bank of America Securities. The only way this transaction moves forward is if you meet your 3% savings threshold, which as Ms. Wormack said, is about $441,000 of present value savings. That's the floor. You can always get higher depending on the market when you guys go out for your sale, which will be at some point in the near future, depending on market conditions. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions on the resolution. Otherwise, I think it's appropriate to have a motion for approval and a vote.
Okay.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, I have a move approval from Dr. Conklin, a second from Cheryl Massaro for the approval of the Certificate Resolution Number 232405 to refund a portion of the outstanding Series 2014A certificate. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously. With the certificate resolution adopted, we will now recess the public hearing and convene the Board as the Board of Directors of the Leasing Corporation.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Chong.
Either one of us.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Does the resolution need to be read aloud?
Not this one, first one.
And this is just a mirror.
I was just looking to torture Will for a little while.
This is just a mirror resolution of the one that was just adopted by the School Board, authorizing the President and Chairman of the Leasing Corporation and the Superintendent to, again, execute the necessary documentation in order to refund the 2014A COPS and as long as the 3% minimum threshold savings is met. And I will note that that savings is net of all costs of the professionals that you guys hire. So we have to hit that after all the costs are paid.
Okay. Ms. Wormack, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that covers it all. Just to Dr. Conklin's point, this was thoroughly discussed at the Board Workshop two weeks ago. So any questions from the public will be answered there from our financial advisor, who gave the presentation to the Board.
Very good. Then I'll need a motion on the approval of the Corporate Resolution Number 2320-24-06 to refund portion of the outstanding Series 2014A certificate.
So moved.
Have it moved by Ms. Massaro.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Did I hear Sally vote? Sally, can you vote on that?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay. With the Corporation Resolution adopted, we will now reconvene to our regularly scheduled session of the School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will now move down to 9.01 Spotlight, Superintendent Strategic Plan Spotlight.
Good evening. I am very excited tonight to recommend for higher the next principal of Old Kings Elementary School, Ms. Jessica Freeze. That will come before you in board action. I saw you, Deputy. You were ready to start clapping, right? So I am recommending Ms. Jessica Freeze for the next principal position at Old Kings Elementary School. After the Board takes action, we would ask to take a picture, but not before the Board takes action on that. And then I am also very excited to recommend for higher the next Assistant Principal of Matanzas High School, Ms. Kara Mann, who is already a part of the ship, but will be coming back into a leadership role in our admin department. And so I'm super excited for the Board to take action on that tonight and for us to seal it with a picture.
Excellent. Congratulations both of you.
Yes, so we'll do that. After you take action, we will stop and take a picture. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And 9.02 Flagler County Education Foundation Spotlight, Ms. Teresa Rizzo. Welcome.
Good evening, School Board Members, Chairman Furry, and Superintendent Moore. Thank you again for allowing us to spotlight the Flagler County Education Foundation this evening. First and foremost, we want to express our profound gratitude to our community, school family, and foundation partners for making our annual dinner an outstanding success. We had the privilege of honoring some community members for their generous contributions of time, talent, and treasure. It was truly inspiring to hear from our school educators, our leaders, and of course, our remarkable Superintendent LaShaka Moore. The unwavering generosity of our community never ceases to amaze us, and their support enabled us to meet our fundraising goal for the evening. We are deeply grateful to everyone who made this achievement possible. We're thrilled to spotlight our Stuff Bus Initiative, which stands for Supplying Things You Find Fundamental. This summer, you're going to see our bus traveling throughout the community, collecting those essential items for the Stuff Bus closets in each of our 11 schools. These closets provide fundamental items for learning for teachers and students. There is a bus coordinator at each school. For more information, you can reach out to Stephanie Ellis at the Education Foundation, and we extend our heartfelt gratitude to Craig Flagler Palm's Funeral Home for bearing our first collection location. The bus is equipped with a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week drop box and a printed wish list of most of the needed items is posted right on the bus. Additionally, we're proud to highlight our collaboration with Easter Seals at their MIP location on US1. Every Thursday night this summer from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, they're hosting a Next Step Workshop for high school students, helping them explore the opportunities for life after graduation. This is a free event, and dinner is also served. The Foundation is honored to support this initiative, which aligns perfectly with our Classroom to Careers program. For more information, you can reach out to Mariotti Johnson, who leads the career program for the Foundation. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to share the exciting developments of the Flagler County Education Foundation, which is a direct support organization for Flagler schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. So we'll move on now to 9.03, State Champions presenter, Thomas Woolahan.
Come on up, everyone. Don't be shy.
Good evening, Chair Furry, School Board Members, and Superintendent Moore. I'm thrilled and honored and brought, if you can go to the next one, please. Just scroll down. There you go. Thank you so much. I'm thrilled and honored to present the 2024 State Champions from Flagler Schools, celebrating the outstanding achievements of our student athletes. Tonight, we do have two student athletes from Flagler Palm Coast High School, Jocelyn Johnson, who took home first place in the 100-pound class in the FHSAA State Championship for girls wrestling. We also have joining us Colby Kronk, who excelled in track and field this year. And I haven't seen Colby in a couple of years, and there's a reason why he's going to go and play Division I football, and I did not. But he won the 4A State Championship in the shot put with winning a throw of over 63 feet. And there are four classifications in track and field, and it was the farthest throw for the shot put of all classifications. Colby also took home second place in the DISCUS at that event. In an upcoming School Board meeting, we will also recognize Mariah and Jordan Mills from Matanzas High School and Christina Borgman from FPC, who are out of state competing in a national tournament. So at this time, I would like to invite Athletic Director Scott Drubzek to the podium to speak about the accomplishments of these student athletes.
Thank you, Mr. Woolahan. Good evening, Chairman Furry, the Board, and Ms. Moore. It's with great honor that I get to brag about two, well, three of our greatest and best and brightest student athletes here this evening. And Mr. Woolahan did a great job of introducing them. First is Mr. Colby Kronk. Colby's a junior with us, two-sport athlete.
Junior.
Both football, both football and track and field. And one thing that we do want to mention about Colby's state championship was it was the 10th longest throw ever in the state of Florida in all classifications. So that was pretty amazing on his behalf. Colby is currently committed to play Division I football at NC State, but we luckily have him for one more year with us in the green and white. Also with us this evening is Ms. Jocelyn Johnson. Jocelyn was our first-ever female girls' state champion in wrestling. She won the 100-pound weight class this year as a sophomore. So Jocelyn will be coming back for two more years as well. If you saw any of our social media her, she had an escape in the last seven, six seconds to win the state championship, and it sent the whole arena up in arms. So it was a pretty cool moment, and we're really proud of both of them. And like Mr. Woolahan said, our third state champion that could not be here this evening is Ms. Christina Borgman. She won the 125-pound weight class with a perfect 26-0 record and won her way via pin in the finals. So we're really proud of all three of our student athletes. Not only are they great on the field, they're also all phenomenal in the classroom, and we're just so proud to be able to honor them this evening.
That's awesome. Pictures?
Congrats, guys. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Go your space.
And as Mr. Woolahan stated, we will be honoring our other three state champions at a later date. We did not want to just come up and flash a picture of them, but really give them an opportunity to come. And we've had to reschedule this a couple times because of their busy schedule competing, but we're super excited and proud of all of our student athletes.
That is exciting.
All right, so we're going to move on to the approval of minutes 10.01 through 10.03. I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Kristi Chong and Ms. Massaro, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. So we have, do we have any adoptions or changes to the agenda?
I do not.
Okay. Then we will move on to public comment.
I'm sorry. I do ask, just for the record, that we do take a short moment after the board takes action so that we can take pictures before we go into the final public comment and board member requests, please.
Absolutely.
All right, so we will move on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay. Would any member of the public like to come forward at this time?
Agenda item.
Okay. Only on agenda items that are on the agenda today. Okay, so we will bring back public comment to the board, and we will move on to financial consent. We have...
Before we go to financial consent, I just want to pull 1307 for just some quick discussion.
Okay.
The rest is fine.
All right. So do we want it for just discussion, or are we moving it to an action item?
To discussion. Then we go back to action.
Okay. So I will...
Just clarification. Can we make sure, just for the record, that we did vote to adopt the agenda, just in case we did not do that, if we can just take a moment to vote to adopt the agenda? Move approval of 1101.
Second.
Okay, I have a move, a motion by Dr. Conklin, a second by Ms. Massaro to adopt the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, so first off, I will move to 13.07 Request Board Approval of District Finance Financial Statements. I need a motion to approve.
So motion to...
I pulled 1307.
Well, we were gonna, you wanted to have discussion, so after the motion, we can have discussion?
Yeah, that is fine.
That way, we're just not putting it all into one consent approval.
That's fine. Works fine.
All right, so I have a motion by Dr. Conklin.
Second.
A second by Ms. Chong. So now we'll open this to discussion.
The reason that I just wanted to discuss this is I'm really looking at our legal fees. I had asked when we had changed our format to pay close attention to how much we were spending, and it's obvious we're starting to spend an awful lot. Originally, we had a smaller amount. We've, one of the Weiss and Sirota's has already been consumed. We now have another opened up, so we've spent, and also with stiffen and spellen, which is in there, we've spent 99, we allotted 99,000, and we spent 60, almost 65,000. So we've got to keep a close eye on that, because, or figure out how. Hopefully, we'll hire our inside or internal council soon and get a contract so we can move along without overinflating our expenses in that area. So that's just my comment.
Very good. Any other comments on this agenda item?
Just for clarification, for the benefit of the public, it's 99,000 has not been spent on legal fees.
65 has.
I don't think that that was what you meant to say, but I just wanted to make sure the public understood that.
No, no, we allotted 99,000, and we have spent 65 of that already.
Where's the 65?
Well, you have to add, you have to look and add the different ones for stiffen and spellen.
Right.
And the two Weiss and Sirota, what we've actually spent, and it comes out to 64,633.
Maybe we should bring Ms. Moore back up here, because we want to make sure we're putting the right numbers out there before we approve this agenda item.
Thank you, Chairman Furry. On the attachment to this item, the amount that is highlighted in yellow is the amount that was spent as of the board workshop two weeks ago.
Okay.
So for stiffen and spelman, you can see it is about 26,000. And then you will need to add the two amounts for Weiss and Sirota.
One was 9,000, correct?
Which is 9,000 and the 29,700.
And the 29,000, which comes out to 64,633.
Right.
Yep. That's all.
Right. But my understanding is that's, we're moving towards actually contracting with council, moving forward.
Give direction.
For in-house.
Yes.
For in-house, after that conversation and that meeting, yes?
Yes, that's the direction we hope and can start limiting our expenses for the board, for both, actually. Well.
Yeah, that's to be, the final format would be, is to be determined, but we definitely have given direction to seek it in council, House Council for, at the very least, the district. And the rest of the format, we'll have to still workshop, so absolutely. Okay. All right. Any other, any further discussion on agenda item 13.07?
If I just may add that some of the costs that is here, they are costs that were going to be, regardless of what.
Right.
So just for that point.
So are you trying to make the point there that we, you know, even though we, whether we have in-house or outside council, there are times where we contract with outside council in general to, for certain legal items? Is that what you're saying, those expenses would have been anyways?
That is true, as well as some of the contractor services, our services that we were already under contract with under our old model, specifically with stiffen and spelman for bargaining purposes. Yes.
That would have been happening regardless. Yes, that's true.
Very good. Thanks for that clarification. So we'll go ahead and need a motion for approval?
Move approval of 13, the finance consent items as a whole.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll do a full consent then. So yeah, we'll do 13.01, 13.08. Need a motion for approval?
She gave it to second.
We have a motion from Dr. Conklin, a second from Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll go to academic service consent, 15.01 to 15.07. I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
I have an approval from Ms. Chong and a second from Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Just discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I just wanted to share, I know I came down pretty hard on the Nefec contract, and I did have a conversation with Pat, the Pat Udek, who is, I always say his last name wrong, Neck?
Wenick.
Wenick. Okay. And I did want to share, he did share additional information about some of the additional pieces that we get the benefit of because we are a member of Nefec, and that is some of the grants in regards to the PLCs, the new teacher and mentoring network program. I think we've, this last year, we had 21 or 30, sorry, 33 participants participate, resiliency support, a grant for 84,000, progress monitoring, and a few others. So in fairness, I know I came down pretty hard, and I still do believe that we are grown to the point where we may not need the full menu of services for Nefec, but I did want to give credit to Pat and Nefec to acknowledge some of the additional pieces that we don't see in the contract. And I gave him my word I would share with the board, so I wanted to do that.
Thank you. So I need a motion to approve academic services 15.01 through 15.07.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Dr. Conklin, a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Before we move on to 16, I just wanted to ask Attorney Delaney, in finance consent, when we had polled 13.07, I had called a motion separately to approve that one agenda item and then called comment, but then we approved it all as a consent before we closed out that motion. Are we okay with that there?
We are. I think the board's all clear on what they were voting for in the minutes. I think we'll reflect that.
So we will move on to 16 Operational Services, 16.01 to 16.02. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Ms. Chong and the second from Dr. Conklin. Any discussion? I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. We will move on to Human Resource Services, 17.01 to 17.03. I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion from Ms. Massaro.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
If I may, I would like to take a moment to introduce the new assistant principal of Matanzas High School, Ms. Kara Mann, if you would come forth. Super excited to have Ms. Kara Mann join Pirate Nation as an assistant principal. I would also like to introduce, for the first time, the very new principal of Old Kings Elementary School, Ms. Jessica Freeze. All right, we're going to take a picture.
Can we get a picture?
Yes, get a picture.
Yes. They did say, are we going to have to say something? I said, no, but sometimes Dr. Conklin does put people on the spot and say, hey, you want to say anything? But we're super excited for them and their leadership, so thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to 27.01 Public Comments. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do, Chair.
Okay, please come forward.
Lauren Ramirez. Her topic is VPK, kindergarten readiness.
That came fast. Hello, everybody. Lauren Ramirez, and I have four children in our schools here. I just wanted to bring up that recently, past few months, I've been, you know, reaching out to a lot of leadership within our community, and the most recent one brought up great information about our VPK initiatives, so I do appreciate that. So the VPK, the instructors now will be eligible for the opportunity for professional learning, which I think is really great. I didn't realize that they didn't have that opportunity in the past, so I'm really excited that that's starting now. And I actually was thinking about that because I know that's a huge initiative that's been talked about. And I have four boys that have gone through VPK and two have a lot of reading challenges. And, you know, you think about, you know, how can you make things better? So I really think this is a really good push, so I really hope that our VPK teachers take advantage of this and, you know, make sure that they're promoted this opportunity and, you know, they're told about it, so whatever it may be, email, you know, just make sure that they're getting that done. So thank you for that. Also, the prep work for parents. So as a parent, I'm excited that there's going to be opportunity for us to help our kids. I remember when my kid, the oldest, was in kindergarten, and it was very hard for me as a parent, and, you know, just sight words alone, I was clueless on that. So I am excited to hear that we're going to have that happening more for our parents here in Flagler. The Reading Pal program, I know you guys have talked about it a lot, and I wasn't even aware of it until last year because one of my son had a Reading Pal, and we were getting cards. I'm like, who's this person? I mean, it was awesome, but then the teacher's like, yeah, we put them with a mentor, Reading Pal. It really, really helped. The scores are still not where, you know, I'd like them to be, or even probably where they should be, but they have improved. But I do want to see if there's a way we can recommend the Reading Pal program more to promote it. I know a lot of them are retired people, you know, and they love doing this, but I really think if we had more community involvement, they, you know, not so much retired, retired, awesome, but we need more, because if I would have maybe had a Reading Pal for both of my kids, well, the two with reading challenges, it may have helped a little bit more. So I'm excited that, you know, I'm hearing more about it, so maybe promoting it more, teacher, staff, countywide, Reading Pal, people need to volunteer and step up and help with that. And I was at the agenda workshop today, and I just wanted to throw out the crossing guard information. So they do arrive really early. I know there were questions. The lights turn on at 6:40 a.m., and then they turn back on at 8:40, and I know that because I am going back and forth at both of those times. So I do want to thank them. They do a lot of work. So thanks for bringing them up today and thanking them, because I thank them a lot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Eddie Lang.
All right. Hopefully, I can do this in three minutes. I wrote it down this time, so I'm prepared. Good evening, school board members, superintendent. I stand before you today to address an important matter regarding the leadership of our school board. As you may be aware, one of our members has recently announced their intention to resign due to relocation. While this decision is understandable, on a personal level, I believe it's imperative for the sake of our community and integrity of our educational system that this member step down from their position immediately. First and foremost, serving on the school board is a commitment to the community we serve. It requires dedication, time, and ability to be present and engaged in the important decisions that affect our schools, teachers, and students. Our board member who's relocating will inevitably find it challenging to fill these responsibilities effectively. This lack of presence and engagement can hinder the progress in decision-making process of the board, potentially impacting the quality of education our students receive. Additionally, the role of a school board member is to represent the interests of the community. A board member who's relocating may no longer have the same connection to our community or the same understanding of our unique challenges and needs. This could lead to decisions being made that do not truly reflect the values and priorities of the people that we, that they were elected by. In conclusion, while I understand this board member's decision to resign is a personal one, I urge them to consider the greater good of our community and step down from the position on the school board. It's essential that our board members are fully committed and presented to effectively serve our community and ensure the success of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next.
That concludes public comments.
Did you not want to speak?
Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Mickey LaGaye, L-A-I-G-A-I-E. Some of you might know that name because I've sent nearly two dozen emails to the board members, including carbon copying them into things that I've been going through with my son at Matanzas High School, concerns I have about policies and procedures not being followed. Also, I have brought up to the superintendent's attention yesterday that there are other students who are also experiencing the same thing my son did, where my sick son was unenrolled from Matanzas High School without our knowledge, and then when I asked to have him re-enrolled, he was refused enrollment. This happened twice. The second time, while we were in the IUP application process, and again, I was told under no circumstances, no matter who I spoke to or who I called, they would not re-enroll my son. I've asked this board members, the members of the board, many times to intervene, to come to my son's defense, to help the other students who are also struggling because of policies and procedures at Matanzas High School that are not in the interests of our children. Unenrolling a sick child, unenrolling any child without the knowledge of their parents, and then refusing to... and then refusing to enroll that child again. My son has missed almost a year of school because of actions in Matanzas High School, and I'm no closer after a meeting with the Superintendent yesterday, after being told by the board back in December that Superintendent Moore and legal counsel for the board would contact Matanzas High School and get back to me, and still, we are no closer to any answers of any of the questions I've asked. All of my concerns have gotten worse, and there are other families who are going through this. And I'd like to ask the board to actually read my emails and get back to me, where we could have a meeting, preferably with counsel, so that we could discuss what can be done for my son, as well as the other students who are also affected by these policies, procedures, as well as lack of follow-through with anybody here in the district that I've encountered in the last seven months. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so no more public comments signed up? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. I do need to go back to item number 18. This carried over to the other page, and I didn't see the line item, but number 18, Superintendent, yeah, Consent, was at the top without a heading, so, but it was for our General Counsel Policy 18.01. This was for advertisement for the new policy. And it is, in Board Docs, what is there is our current policy, but the proposed new language is written in the Agenda Item Detail. So just for reference for the public and for other board members if you need to know. So this, I need a motion to approve, 18.01.
Who have approval?
Have an approval from Ms. Chong, a second? Have a second from Dr. Conklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Passes 4-1. So we will now move back to 28.01, Board Member Requests. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to 28.02, Upcoming Board Discussion Topics. Now, is this from what we talked about?
Yes, I just want to acknowledge that at the last board meeting, we did have Ms. Masero to request that we list there the upcoming board topics. We are working on the formatting, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. We're working on the formatting, but that will be shown at the July 9th workshop.
Okay, so just for clarification, so I understand, because I got a little confused there. So obviously, Board Member Requests, I would, I would think like what I did during the workshop today about AI would have been the request, right?
Yes.
Is that similar?
So, yes. So what Ms. Masero did ask is that going forward, when there is a Board Member Request, that we list them there. And so going forward, you'll see a list of all of the requests that are currently outstanding. And as we address those requests, we will, they will fall off of that list.
Okay, so do I, since I did bring that up during the workshop, is it the pleasure of the board that I bring it up again during this item, or are we good?
No, we do have that listed.
Okay.
Yes.
So that then would end up falling under item 2802?
Yes, along with any other item that is for Board Member Request, yes.
Gotcha. So I don't see it, so I don't know if it's on a list, but during the workshop for this meeting, we had a conversation about teacher retention and recruitment and exit surveys, and also trying to look at if there's any trend data, but looking at the exit surveys, what they were providing, what information we were able to glean from that, but also looking at how many of our teachers do we, and staff, do we have on that end of retirement? How many are in that, you know, one to five-year period and whatnot? So we can look at the bands in preparation of our needs. Just after looking at the number of individuals that retired this year, it's, I think it's valuable for us to have a presentation on that to stay ahead of it.
Yes, we do have an HR, all things HR with those things that you have mentioned listed, and that is going to be, that is for the 1 o'clock, I want to say on July, I don't see Bob over there, I want to say it's the July meeting, that that is on there. But you'll see all of those things listed for the format.
Gotcha. Okay.
Something on that topic. I understand Dr. Conklin's request for exit surveys, and I've been trying to deal with some people with, talking to people in the HR field, and they're not as conclusive as we would like them to be, and what a lot, because, I mean, they're done, they're out of here, and it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get what you really want. That we may want to consider what they call "stay" surveys. What makes people and employees want to stay? What can we do to help them want to stay? You know, and I think that might be another avenue that the HR department might want to look into, because then you're doing a positive spin on, you know, and they may have some negative responses, but then we can work to fix them so they are happy and they want to stay.
And they're called, they are called "stay" surveys. Does that make sense? Yeah, sure, it does. I like, actually, I think both of them would probably provide some sort of a picture for us to look at. Exit surveys also depend on what are you asking, and in what way are you asking it? Is it an online survey that people can do at home, or is it a face-to-face, somebody leaves disgruntled, they're not going to want to sit down? You know, and what type of questions are we actually asking? Are they questions to glean information where we can look for trends and trend lines? Or, so the survey tool would be important to look at. But I agree with you, Cheryl, and I love the idea of a "stay" survey to build upon that, but.
But you can just do spot surveys of all different departments at different times and find out why they like it here, or if they don't, they'll let us know. But at least it's taken their, their current situation into thought, and it might help us in the long run.
And the other thing is, I think with the expansion of the empowerment scholarships and educational opportunities, not just for students and families, but also for teachers. I know, you know, there may be people that are very happy here, but there's other opportunities out there that are more financially beneficial to their families or not, I don't know. So I'd be curious to know how that is impacting our teacher retention and recruitment.
Yes, so we will be bringing before you HR update. It will cover a lot of different topics, but majority is really the opportunity for a conversation, and then we can get some additional feedback on what you would like to see the possibility of implementation.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on now to closing comments. You have any closing comments?
You know what, I really don't. A great workshop today, lots of good information. I really appreciate it. I know we're, everybody thinks everyone in education is on vacation in the summertime. I know we have a whole host of folks that are really working hard, so just want to thank them. And at some point, an update for the board on the situation that was, was mentioned again at the end of the meeting, I think would be beneficial. That's all.
Thank you.
Just, my closing remark has to deal with the loss of a program that we've, we've had for a very long time. Actually, I was involved, and we originated that program called Road to Success. Road to Success is a grant-funded program from Workforce Development money, and what it does is it captures kids, students, who have dropped out, been kicked out, quit, there's all kinds of reasons, to educate them and get them their GEDs. And that process has been going on for close to 10 years. During that timeframe, they have now graduated 375 students. There were 375 students that probably would not have gotten their high school diplomas, but they did. Out of that, 94% of them are working locally, going to college, or in the military service. Very high in the state of Florida for us to be doing that. We were notified just recently that due to a reorganization of the regions, they clumped Flagler and Volusia in with Brevard, and Brevard was handed half the amount of money all three of them got, and they're keeping it. They're pretty much keeping the majority of the funds, and we're getting nothing, and Volusia's getting nothing. So our employees and our program is done as of June 30th. That bothers me, especially when we're in a climate that we're trying to train our students to work locally, and this has an internship program associated with it. When I have staff that, you know, I say "aye" simply because I've hired the main person there that's been doing such a wonderful job, Mr. Brian Willard, he has a family he has to take care of, and he's been told now, guess what? And I understand this is great, it's not a school, this is not a school district issue. We're trying as a school district to do everything we can to save that program. This is a state issue coming out of the governor's office, and it hurts. It hurts bad, and we've got to figure out ways, and I'm, I'm on the phone all day this morning to a lot of local representatives to figure out what can we do, how can we save this program? And I know that Superintendent Moore and her team has been working feverishly on their end because it's just, just notified, it just happened. Two weeks is not a very long time, and we're trying to tie it into some other program. We have a lot of open options, we're trying, but the chances are very slim, within two weeks, you're going to be able to do anything, and we have a waitlist with that program. There is a waitlist of kids and families that want to use it. So I don't know, I'll keep doing what I need to do to try to save it. I will keep doing what I can to get some kind of funding, looking for outside grants, looking for donations, we're looking for anything to keep this program afloat, but even, even if it's for a half a year to give us more time to find more money. But two weeks, it's tough. It's really tough to find, you know, a chunk of money, and it costs $300,000 to run this program. So if anybody's got a spare change laying around, let me know, because we certainly could use it. But that, that is my disappointment in, in the state right now. Thank you.
Cheryl, can I, can I add, Chair Fury, can I add to that? Just for context and background, for the benefit of the public, I know the board is aware of this, Career Source in the state has merged the, basically the two career sources, Brevard and the Volusia Flagler. Career Source merged to one. My question for legal counsel, for Mr. Delaney, and I had shared this in an email with Superintendent Moore, they distributed the funds, that merging doesn't happen until July 1. They distributed and granted these fund dollars June 12th with the old board. So what happens July 1st is there is a new board that is seated, seated between the Volusia Flagler Career Source and the Brevard Career Source. One board is then taking place, right? Staff as well. I mean, this is a huge disruption. Basically, I'm not sure what staff, the Volusia Flagler Career Source is being absorbed and whatnot, but primarily, Brevard is being, is taking over. My question is legally, how can they distribute the money for the coming school year prior to the new board coming onboard July 1, right? And let's say they can do it legally. My request would be that as a board and a superintendent and Renee from FTC, that we send a letter basically expressing our concerns that this money was prematurely allocated. I still don't know legally how they could actually do that when they're not working with their new board yet, and you're talking about a matter of two weeks. There is absolutely, positively no reason why they could not have waited till the new board was seated July 1, and shame on them for doing what they did. But what, there should be some recourse that as a board and as a district that we should have at a minimum to share our disappointment in the actions that they took. In addition to that, Flagler County, the county commissioners, I would recommend they, there should be a conversation. This is a county piece, and at this point in time, who's sitting on the new Career Source Board that represents Flagler County? Because it was bad enough when it was Volusia Flagler, we never got our fair share, but now that it's Volusia Flagler-Brevard, who is representing Flag, whose voice is at the table advocating for Flagler to get its fair share? Because for years, we haven't, and now it is just going to get worse. So those, those, to echo the disappointment that Cheryl has shared, I, I think we should have some legal recourse, if there is any.
Mr. Delaney, can I jump in first, because I can probably answer some of her questions? The only reason I can answer these questions, I've been spending all morning talking to all the pecking order of people I needed to talk to, and I actually had a very long conversation with Al Hadid from the county.
Okay, good.
Okay. The county has created an inter-local agreement to work with this new board, and in this inter-local agreement, he has it stated where no decisions can be made prior to any information to all the participants, which means Flagler County and Volusia, and it has a very big challenge against the allocations which you're speaking of, because you're right, that should not have happened. That shouldn't have happened. Okay? The consortium is going to be made up of, I believe it's 27 or 28 people, three of which are from Flagler County. One is to represent, one is the county representative, which is Donnie O'Brien, and when Donnie O'Brien steps out in November, it will become Andy Dance, which is good for the district. And then they need a representative, and they've already spoken, Mr. O'Brien has already spoken to our Superintendent for Representative, and she's working on that designee, because they will be the only education person serving on that board. Whatever designee we have, nobody else of the 27 will have an education background. The new group that has been already selected to provide the services is not providing services to youth, it's only providing services to adults. So this July 1st meeting, which is their first meeting, is going to be huge because there's going to be a lot of issues addressed, and I believe those are already addressed in this new inter-local agreement that has been created by Mr. Hadid. I am sending him tomorrow, I told him I was busy all day today, a list of the accomplishments that have been created by the Road to Success program. He had not a clue. So him and Don O'Brien, Commissioner O'Brien, will have them. He will be taking it to the meeting. So I'm hoping there is some better resolution here, but of course, I can't guarantee that, and that's not until after June 30th, when all of our employees are done.
Are we, because wea dollars, the wea dollars that they were using were specifically deliberately, I mean, by federal law, they have to be spent on youth programs. Is there a possibility that there are still funds available that will be dispersed? Or were they, were they officially notified they were denied?
Yes. There was an application that was a request or proposal that Brian Willard did and was denied.
Okay.
So, and that should not have happened either until the new board was put in place.
That's my point.
So, yes, Mr. Hadid is on this, it is a county commission issue that we happen to be a part of because we applied for the money, we got the money, and it's servicing the South District of Benel. And that's another issue that, that has to be brought to the surface. So hopefully, we keep, we just can't let this happen and let, and do nothing. I guess that's the bottom line. We have to do something, and even if it's a letter to, of disappointment or whatever, I have the people in touch, I'm working with it. I don't know what'll come of it, but at least we know we have things that are in place, and I think Mr. Hadid's going to follow through. Does that help you, Mr. Delaney?
Yes, ma'am.
So can we, is there consensus to send a letter on behalf, a joint letter?
I would give consensus to that. I, I, that has been a very successful program, and I think it's a necessary one. You know, it's, it's all about funding. Obviously, we have the, the assets in place to keep this program going without Obviously, we have the, the assets in place to keep this program going without, we just don't have the financial funding to do it. So if there were ways to, to, to find that funding somewhere else, that would be, I would, I would support that, so.
What the state did is they condensed all of the regions. So instead of having 27 different regions, they now have like 12. And they took the monies and they cut them. So that $700,000 that Brevard received was basically how much they used in their program. And they're not going to share, they don't want to share. So it's going to be interesting to see what happens, but that's how much they cut the budget. So we'll see what happens.
Okay. So we do have consensus to move forward that. Just want to mention real quick for the public, our closing comments aren't normally have this type of discussion, but tonight I allowed it because there were board members that had said they wanted to have this discussion today, that may have just slipped their mind earlier.
I did, I forgot.
Right. So I, I felt it was necessary that we, we talk about this because it is something that it's affecting. I've received phone calls on this too from constituents and there's some definitely concern in the community over this program potentially ending, so.
Thank you.
So we'll continue closing comments. Ascent, do you have anything you'd like to add? Ascent, are you still online? Okay, here, not hearing a response, I will move on to Ms. Chong.
I don't really have anything tonight, just I hope everybody's having a good summer and that you get a chance to just rest and spend some time with your children. And yeah, happy summer.
Yes, thank you all.
Will, did you ask if I was still online?
Yes, I didn't hear you chime in.
I don't have any comments.
Okay, please, go ahead. Do you have any, did she say she had none? Okay, all right. So thank you.
Yeah, no comment. Thank you, Will.
Okay, thanks for confirming that. Okay, so yeah, just want to thank staff and for an excellent workshop today and for another great meeting tonight. Also want to congratulate Ms. Freeze and Ms. Mann on their, their new positions. And I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Moore.
Yes, I'm glad. I can't remember which board member stated it, that the summer, we are definitely not closed. We are busy preparing for the new year and a lot of work going into place in order to have a great start to our year. We're pushing out lots of information for families on our social media as well as through email. And so continue to stay engaged, have your children reading, engaging with their schoolwork in different ways. And we hope everybody that is at home, especially our instructional staff and our paraprofessionals and all the groups that are at home right now, they do have an opportunity for some rest, but also taking advantage of a lot of the great opportunities for professional learning that we are offering.
All right, thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.